I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under new business, we can take the fire department off. They let Casey know that they're not going to be able to make it. So we'll start with the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or changes?
I had grand instead of grant.
Say that again, Paul.
Grand instead of grant. It says pool grand. It's probably pool grand, I'm assuming that is.
I'll have Abby change that if that's the full consensus.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve if there's no other changes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Paul makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the bills. You can do bills and payroll together if you so choose. If there's no questions or changes, do I have a motion to approve? Is there a second? Moved by John, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, you can do the January financials. Or just accepting Casey's report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to accept the report.
Is there a second? Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. The last one is the end of year reports for 2024. This is to accept those and these would then be published in the paper. Jason makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to commissioners' reports. We'll start with John tonight.
Well, I guess the young thing, I did talk to Tim Wright to get that bid for that concrete work. And I talked to Jay and they're going to leave the manhole cover there because of the elevation change coming across from the drain across the street. He said they would need to have a manhole cover there and not plate it over. But yeah, Tim's going to give a price on that and I assume he'll get it sent over to Casey and Gell's over there. We'll get it on the next meeting when that's available. Other than that, they don't have anything to report.
Okay, thank you.
Is that the concrete?
That's the sidewalk in front. They got that manhole that's real high.
Yep, yep.
So they're going to lower it down.
Yep.
They want to do some sidewalk work as well.
Is that different than the bid they got last year?
The price may come in differently.
I just care.
It all depends on what concrete prices have done in the last six months. But yeah, submit it through and then we can discuss it hopefully at the next meeting.
What was the concern to the manhole cover across the street or something?
Well, there's a drain across the street.
Okay.
That comes into that manhole. And Wade Jay explained it to me. I guess there's an elevation change there. Played it over. He said it would be difficult to work with that because of that elevation change. So he said we should leave the manhole cover there and not plate over it. Playing it over, it would make it a lot cheaper. They could just take the manhole cover out, pick the rings out, plate it over. We'd probably have to drop that actual manhole cover.
Great. Okay. Any other questions for John? Nicole?
Um, I don't really have anything. I did. Can you tell me kind of where we're at with the East Central? I mean, is that ready for review? I guess is my question.
So our next step on the East Central would be to sit down with them in the next month or so. Or two months and decide how we're going to move forward on all the details. The last meeting, we approved the land easement. But we haven't flushed out any of the details on the other stuff.
So I'll redo that then.
But and really, we can't finalize that. We could work out some of the details, but we can't work out everything because we won't have electrical rates yet.
How about on that, Nicole, who's kind of, who's going to be your kind of expert to verify? What's not in our best interest and what is? Who, you know?
Mr. Zach might be able to be kind of a liaison between the questions and kind of those hardball things of what's great, what's not great.
The same way with, I'm sure there's some legalese in there that JR, you know, if you had any questions on. But I just think, I think we need to make sure that we have something, especially if Zach isn't comfortable with it. I don't know who that person may or may not be, but I think we need to have somebody that's at that particular meeting that has some knowledge.
I agree. And I think I have to look into that joint powers too and if that ties in at all or not at all. I don't know how that works, so.
And I don't know if you would have a clue who that person may or may not be. Because obviously unless JR's a water expert on everything.
They're probably taking a couple people.
I want to make sure that, you know, it's in the best interest of both parties. Do you have to, who's going to schedule that meeting?
I haven't, we haven't even looked at it yet, so. We just got the other one done and they've been out on meetings and stuff at Washington, so.
So no, nothing right now?
Nothing right. The second, no.
I guess my question is, are we at the point where we can read the agreement? Or what's written basically?
You can read, you can read it through there and we can start dictating or making suggestions on what we want changed or concerns we have or any of those things.
Perfect.
Jason, do you have anything tonight?
Um, yes. One thing the fire department approached me on was that whole black patrol car that's sitting yet. They were wondering if we'd have any interest in letting them use it as a tariff car. I spoke with Steve and Steve also feels with the amount of repairs that are needed for that car that we're probably not going to recoup them to make it drivable. So I was bringing to the commission to see if the commission would be okay in donating that car to the fire department for training purposes.
Any objections to that?
I don't have any issues with that.
Okay. That's good.
Perfect, thank you. Steve will talk with the, had asked him, he'll talk to the company as well tomorrow. Get to go ahead if we were good with it, so. And then the only other thing I have is actually, I can, I can wait, so that's up. Get, I'll touch base with you then more Casey before me. It's the cemetery stuff, so.
Paul?
Okay, we had an APDC, it was a pretty quiet meeting. Last meeting, nobody was really, there was nothing real nuanced. So nothing a lot to report on the APDC side other than that they have been doing a lot of loans. So that's going good on their side. On beautification, I had talked to somebody about doing, kind of drawing up a maybe potential design with some, Levi had gave us some idea on something. So she was going to take that with other people and see if she could come up with an idea of something we could do at Railroad Park. So I was in a different meeting today and she popped in the shop, so I missed her, but maybe she'll have something that we can maybe look at doing to help beautify Railroad Park in the future. So when I told her, I said, if you can at least get something drawn up on a masthead, we can always go from there, so.
Does she have like some ideas, Paul?
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. She was going to come up with some ideas on what they could do as far as whether it be trees, whether it be benches, picnic tables, whatever it might be. She was mainly going to concentrate on what we, where we put the burl to start with. When we get the burl back, how we would kind of put that out there as far as try and set it up in a way that maybe we wouldn't have people crawling on it as much. Some things like that, but so she had some good ideas from Levi to kind of get that, kind of get that going, so. We'll see how that pans out and I thank her for doing that. On the electrical side, I just heard today that DGR, who's doing this, doing all the setup for the electrical side, they're about 90% done with their report. So we're hoping that we can get that done by next, but one thing that's holding that up from being done is where we can put our substation. Last meeting, we had a couple of choices that we remember we were looking at. There was a letter out to the one. I don't know if you've heard back on that yet. But the other option was the one south of the cap drone where the cell tower is. That was a pie-shaped piece. We did talk to him and he would be willing to sell that for $150,000. So I, talking to DGR, talking to Roy, talking to kind of the powers that be, so to speak, feel that would be, that would be well, that should be on a potentially $20 million project, they thought that would be a good purchase because it's a spot. It's right next to distribution lines. So we're not, we're just looking into the distribution lines right there. So yes, it may, some may look at it as being a high cost, but in the big picture of it, they felt that the $100,000 would be a fair price to pay for that property, so. So I would, I would, I would make a motion that we have JR write up a purchase agreement for that property for $150,000. He would visit with, with the landowner and have and work out the details on it. There is a cell tower on there that he does get a lease on right now. And he was going to try and get that paperwork so you guys could, because he would like to keep that, so. That's, I'm making a motion that we have that for $150,000. And then we can go from there if we get a second.
Is there a second?
Why do we need another substation?
We're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be upgrading our, our power, what we use for our base power and it makes basically that substation we got, the old one, right? As we come off the interstate, that would have to be, that would have to, that would be the one we're going to upgrade to. Because that's the oldest one. And because of the development on the west side and then how they upgrade that, I wish Roy was here. He could do a better job of explaining it, but they can't really redo that substation where it is. So without interrupting electrical supply, obviously. This way they'll be able to build it here and then, then they just basically, when everything is all placed, they can flip a switch and and everything is, is up and working. And then the old substation would eventually be tore down and and that land would be whatever the city wants to do it at that point, so. But, but they need, they can't really come up, DGR can't really come up with a final number until they really have a, where they're going to put it. Because obviously if we put it other places, there's going to be additional costs. Because this was the number one preferred location that DGR felt would be from a cost-effective standpoint. That was the cheapest place. The other place that we talked about was going to be substantially more money because of the distance from, from the city, so. But any other questions, so? Oh, no, no, that's only too, a little over two acres.
I mean, a substation doesn't take a terrible amount of room, but.
No, it won't and, you know, and it's a small thing, but city employees probably would appreciate. Yeah, but whatever we don't have used up, we were looking at places to put snow too. So and they have put snow there in the past, so that's one benefit too. If we get that, now we also have whatever acre we don't, we used it for the whole substation. We could put snow on it potentially. And it does, and it does allow enough for generation. We want to add generation out there too in the future, so. And they just said that would, from what they're working on, DGR said that was an adequate acreage. And I guess if you look at the small property piece we have down here that the substation's on now and compared to what that is, that's substantially, you're probably I don't know, would you even be a quarter of an acre, you know, on that? It's a pretty tiny one, you know, so it is substantially, you know, it gives us room for expansion if we need to. Plus it also gives us room, like I said, to put snow and, you know, whatever we want. Does everybody know where I'm talking about?
Okay.
You know where I'm talking about?
Well, jeez, jeez, miss.
So.
Do you have the money already in your budget for that?
This would, this would be, no, this would come with electrical project. It's what all be done.
It would be all together?
Yep, yep. It would all go into the project, yep.
So for the, this part of the process, it's to buy the land, right? And then probably the second stage is probably the development of the substation, right?
And that's going to be, and that's going to be
That would be?
Six years.
Yeah.
Probably six years down the road.
Okay.
But we want to, but we want to secure the land, you know, but it would also, but all that would be, that would all be in the JR's purchase agreement on how that would be, how that would be worth and when we would need it and have that property secured, so.
Just out of curiosity, why, why take down the other substation?
Because they're upgrading the voltage it's using on it. They're going to the latest and greatest voltage now. They're going from 48 to 72.
So it's just like not needed at all?
Right, right, yeah. It's not, you can't use that substation to upgrade. Plus, we're going to go, that's only a five megawatt, whereas we're going to 12, 15 potentially. So we're, so what we wanted, because we're right peaked out right now, so we need a new, in order to handle the needs of the city, we need to, we need to upgrade one of them. And because that's the oldest one, that's the one that they recommended upgrading. And, and that's, like I said, that'll be, I don't think it's been determined yet, but I, but my talking to Roy, it's going to be a 12 to 15 megawatts, so. And the city right now runs around nine, you know, on their peak, nine to 10. We were actually pretty close to 10, if not over, when we really had a cold weather. This, when it was like 20, 30 below, so we're really, we're pushing it right now, so.
So this would help with the, kind of the other issues with some of the other, like commercial things and stuff like that to help that.
Right. So what, so what would happen is we could, this is, this can all be. So what can happen is all, like we did over up on the north end, we bore underneath, we made a line underneath the interstate. That would be the same thing here. If this was ever developed, Roy would then determine, okay, what do we need for power over there? What do we want to do for power? And then we could bore across and put power to the other side. And the advantage to it here is we're taking care of all this side, but yet if something does develop over there, it's just a matter of boring and putting it in. So with that way, if any, if any development happens over there, you know, within a year, we have by the time they started their planning, we would have, we could figure out how to get that power over to them, depending upon where they bought land across the across the interstate, I don't know, so. So that's kind of, that's, that's the request there and I, I, yes, like I told, you know, Roy thought it was more than fair, but then Roy says, I come from California. You know, so he thought it was more than fair. You know, I guess we can ask. We think it might be less, but I asked him and he said, he said, Paul, I really, I can use that piece for anything. He said, I can get that. He says, why do I want to give it away? So, so it is a good piece of rest, you know, and it's kind of, you know, it's already got a cell tower on it. It's not really in shape for anybody to really put a big business or something on either, you know, so. For the most part, it's been used that way for, month before John, you're about their land for up there. I think the trailer place, they had their trailers on before they started over there, so, you know, but, yeah. Any other questions or concerns? And I don't know if you have anything to add, Levi, you?
I prefer a second before we move to.
Well, I thought you had a second.
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just asked a question.
So is that a second?
Who made the motion?
Paul. I made the motion.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I thought we had a second.
Second. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Paul just kept talking.
Well, I thought we had a second.
Questions on that.
I thought we had a second. I got, I got better hitting than the rest of you.
But nobody, I heard beat it. So this was part of our executive session last time was decide how we were going to move forward on this and the other property. The other property would be across the road, which that is still open. We sent the letter to them asking them, which would be where Casey's moving now. And the history on that one is that there are some specials that are coming due on that property when it's completely done. And we were going to trade some acres for the bill, basically. But Paul and DGR said that, you know, the estimated would have been about $800,000 more to move it on the other side. Where it was potentially located, because we were going to put it all the way back in the corner. Because we knew, we knew that they would want the front footage for industrial more than looking at a substation, so.
And by putting it over there, they would have, because there's no transmission lines there, they would have, we'd have the added cost of the transmission, which I'm sure is part of that $800,000.
Right. Which, and we didn't know which way to go, so that's at the, at the executive session, we decided to, we didn't decide, we just direction to go look at both and go from there. And so this would be the first motion that would come out of it is to approve the purchase of that triangle piece property for 150. So in the long run, 150 is less than 800,000.
Sweet.
If we need to pay for it upfront, it can come out of Generation Fund, which is the one I would suggest to take it out of. Because I would assume that we put, then if those new generators do come to fruition, that would be a good spot for them, so. Is there any other discussion on it?
Concern? I might have very good explain here. I apologize.
I thought you did pretty good.
You did some.
Hey, at least you knew where it was located.
We're going to start timing, Paul, how long your discussions get.
Well, now we're not wasting, now we're not wasting any time after the second, we're right there to go.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul? Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Motion carries. So we'll have JR draft that up, work with, and then we'll have that agreement come and we'll finalize that agreement, correct?
You have contacts for him?
All right. Paul, do you have anything else?
I think that's all I have.
Are you sure?
Beautification?
Oh, Casey organized a nice meeting today for all of us in electrical side, so to kind of get us a timeline and a to-do list, so. So we're kind of, once, once this DGR thing gets done, now with this, we can hit the ground running. It looks like, it looks like right now on our timeline, we have that this project, if it goes through and we get, of course, we're, we're doing some ramp running too. But the timeline would be to bid this, this winter, correct? And then hopefully hit the ground running next spring and Roy would have everything in place and everything ordered and and hopefully then in the spring of '26, we could start doing. We're going to start, we're going to be, we're looking at four phases. So we'd be starting, of course, with, the first phase is trying to get the internal of the city, any transformer issues, any wire issues, whatever. So the, the main concentration point right now is the northeast side to start with. But it's going to be, anything that Roy determines needs to be upgraded in our infrastructure for electrical, that would be first phase. So, and this is over 10 to 12 years. So it's not, it's not like we're going to start on this next year and it's going to be done, so. And of course, if everybody's wondering, it's probably going to be funded by electric rates. But we'll know that more when Missouri River gives us our rate study. And that's why the DGR thing is so important to get going on because, or finish up because they need that information. There's a rate study.
In which at the last meeting, we approved to is it 4,000? Free to us to write the grant and the grant is up to 3.2. Or somewhere, that's what we're going to try to go for, so.
And talking to Steve is kind of tricky to do, we got, because we can't really, we got to kind of get all that paperwork in place before we start the project, correct? We can't go and we can't, because Roy, of course, trumped up the bid to get going on this, but you can't order things beginning going until we, until we see if this grant is going to come through or not, so. But it'll, it'll all work out. It gives them to somewhere to get things in order and gives everybody, it won't rush everybody and get everything done right.
Is it state plan or federal grant?
Federal. So you know why we're waiting.
I will say a prayer.
Say two of them. Say a couple of them. One every night.
Maybe they can put them on top of each other.
More early in the morning, too.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. I don't really have a whole lot tonight. Paul talked about beautification. Planning is only at a special meeting. We talked about they're doing some revisions on the way that things go to Midwest inspections. So I think we're going to be, they're looking more at having the office make some more determinations. So they're making that in the right direction. Hopefully streamline some of the things and they are working on revising the application process as well, so. And they're still looking for a member for the extraterritorial zone, so. Zach, do you have anything for us tonight?
No, I do.
Okay.
I just want to bring up the fence out at the lagoon.
Turn on, turn the mic on.
Put it on?
Nope, just turn on.
Push it on?
Till it lights up. There you go.
Here. What's that?
Good.
Um, the fence out the lagoon needs some attention. It's in pretty tough shape. So I've been putting some numbers together for that.
Oh, push it up.
Putting some numbers together.
There you go.
And just kind of see what you guys' opinion are for our direction. Do we want to, you know, we get some bids from some local companies or something? Or quotes, or do we want to put that out for bids or, or something along that line?
I think the easiest.
And some quotes or?
I don't know much about the fence out there though either, so.
It's just a
It's just a three strand barbed wire, very, very simple. It's, no, it's pretty much non-existent by now, but so.
I think if we just put out a bid in the paper and let whoever bid to say the amount of feet we need and, and we need.
Yeah, that can, okay, it's, it's, it's pretty simple. It's not elaborate, if that's what you mean.
Where the holes and everything has to be replaced?
Yeah, there's, they're rotted off.
Is it wood or steel?
Huh? It's wood. No, it's all wood. I mean, it's, it's 30 plus years old, I know, and they did the last project out there. That was in our last state inspection, that was our only thing, was our defenses. They need some attention, so.
Steve had told me that when we did the inspection for the, the line tubes.
And they got partially down there, but it was already.
Right. He asked if we wanted it fixed and I said no, because I think we need to replace the whole thing anyways.
The whole thing needs some attention, so I can get some numbers and all that.
So if you. We should have a motion then to put it out for bids.
I'll make a motion to put out the fence off the lagoon bid.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Jason, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries.
That's all I have, it's good with that's nice weather, maybe we'll get outside and do some stuff.
All right. JR, do you have anything? Casey?
Um, I have a few things, um, just to give you guys a heads up, um, USDA is requiring us to do a water and sewer rate study, um, just due to not enough revenue coming in, um, for what they require, um, for their yearly, for their yearly reporting, so we're gonna be doing that here over the next couple months, um, so you guys will have studies on your electric plus your water and sewer, so. Good things, good things are coming, um.
Is that different than the other, like?
The electric rate one?
No, the ones we've had in the past, um.
From A to S, or from?
No.
We haven't had.
I'm trying to think of what the name of it was, I'll look it up.
Okay.
I know we've had something done for three years in a row, but I don't know what that was called.
Sure, um, yeah, this one is, it's required from USDA, um, they, they check in every single year if you guys do a project with them, um, and it was pretty transparent that, um, there wasn't a net revenue to support the expenses, um, and because of that, they are having us do a rate study with them, so, so we're gonna be working on that over the next few months. Um, Tyler Tac is going good, um, we're doing training and getting, um, data sent over and getting everything set up, so hopefully we'll be live in July or August. Um, we're gonna be doing Bell Bank Retirement Employee Training on Wednesday afternoon, May twenty-eighth, at one P M. We just scheduled this, um, cause not a whole lot of us have ever sat down with Bell Bank and talked about our options, so if any of you guys would like to come, please mark your calendars, one o'clock, Wednesday, May twenty-eighth. Um, then, I just had two questions, um, does the city, um, this was mentioned by the, by the paper, does the city need to put out bids for our insurance? Is that something that you guys typically do every few years? We didn't in Harwood, and I just haven't done that before, so I just wanted to ask.
We did the last time, when it changed, but before that, we haven't.
Okay, do you guys wanna keep it as is, or do you wanna put it out for bids again? For the record, I've had really good luck with all the claims that we've had to deal with over this last year, so they've been, Farmazini has been really good to work with, so.
By that, I guess nobody wants?
Cause we just, you guys just did that last year, right?
It was probably right before Casey came, we switched.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
I had three or four.
Yep.
Three or four presenters from, from different insurance companies.
Cause if you remember, it, it doesn't change, our rates don't change based on, um, it's just whether you prefer, cause the, with North Dakota Insurance Reserve, it's always gonna be the same rate, no matter what agent we go with, so. Um, back then, it was the determination that that was the one that was in town. We invited those that, at the last time, that were in the city, and they ultimately went with the one that lives down within the city, so.
They were happy with them, stayed with them. And the previous one, we'd had for many years, because they too were easy to deal with before they retired, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect. Um, and then the only other thing that I have, um, is, um, Sarah put in her resignation, um, she will be uh, no longer with the city as of the twenty-first of this month, um, and I am looking for a motion to approve her resignation, and then I'm also asking for approval to, um, advertise to fill the position. Um, I did check with Abby to see if she would be interested in moving into that role, um, she is not, she really enjoys her position as is, um, and I really enjoy her there as well, she, she does a great job, um, in her role, she just has a really great skill set for what she's doing, so. Um, so yeah, requesting motion to approve, um, the resignation, and then requesting, uh, approval to advertise for an open position.
So any questions for Casey or a motion?
Uh, make the motion to approve and then advertise.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jason, seconded by Nicole, any other discussion?
As far as, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna have, you have the, you have to do anything with the, the job description, so to speak? Is that all recurrent?
You know, it's something I'll probably have to review and ensure that it's up to date, um, but yeah, we'll.
Is it aligned with our handbook or everything, as far as wages and everything?
I'll have to, I'll have to look, yeah, I haven't had a whole lot of time to check into it, so, but yeah, I, we'll, we'll make sure that it's up to date with that, so. Good question, thank you.
Any others? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries? Anything else?
Uh-uh, that's it, thank you.
You were talking about Sheriff's Office, Steve? Did it light up?
Uh, maybe, no, no.
Better is probably dying.
Um, a couple things, one, the, uh, that service line inventory is back on schedule again, um, they've started authorizing some projects. Hillsborough probably won't be, um, inspected until summertime. The whole statement would be done by fall, but, uh, it'll probably be summer before Hillsborough gets authorized to go up. And, uh, we'll have, we'll have employees, uh, A West employees out with, uh, they have a badge that says who they work for and what they're doing, and, um, they have, uh, A West gear on, and then they'll go door to door, uh, one of the towns we're working in now, what they do is go from like three in the afternoon to seven at night, kind of catch when everybody's at home instead of going during the day and not being able to catch anybody, and it's been working out pretty well, but, well, we'll look at that again this summer, but it gets authorized. The sewer discussion from, uh, last week, we started talking about, uh, running a, needing a sewer service up on the north end of town. Uh, we looked at that a little bit, and, uh, the, the best thing to do for the sewer is to, uh, run a lift station up, um, put a lift station in to kind of help develop that whole area up there. Uh, it's gonna take some buy-in from like the neighborhood, that could possibly be expanding fast. Just right.
There we go.
So that parcel four oh four, they came in asking for, uh, um, sewer service, and, uh, the property right next to the zero zero eight, just to the west of that, there's like six, six parcels in there, then we're all outside the city limits, and there's a, a manhole um, on the south end of them, six lots, and then the other manhole closest is one over by, uh, the city shop. So either way, to get a sewer up to that property, we'd have to get, uh, an adhesion to get something over there. The best thing would be a lift station up on seventh avenue northwest, and pump it down to one of them, the closest, uh, sewer pipe, and then that would provide sewer service up to the north end, but with, uh, lift station and, and piping, we're probably a million dollars or more, so it makes it pretty tough for one service if you're not getting buy-in from the neighborhood to, to provide sewer to the rest of them, but they would all have to get annexed in order to get sewer, um. If they wanna do that, if you wanna do that, it'd be, uh, maybe have a neighborhood meeting and see if we can get everybody engaged, or something like that. To put a sewer in just for that one property, um, they could put a private grinder pump in and pump it down to one of the lift, or one of the pipes south of there, but they still have to get a, an adhesion in order to get back to where the existing sewer tanks are. So there is really easier, cheap fix for it. Just thought I'd bring that up.
That's, that four oh four right there has something on it, but they don't have sewer?
They don't have sewer, uh.
They don't have sewer or water. They were talking about building a shop there, and he asked us if we would hook up, I said, water, we could do very easily, it's the sewer. He is in city limits right now, but, um, we had basically, or we said last meeting, you know, it's eight hundred to a million dollars to put it in for one resident, and we can't do that, so Steve is gonna go back and look for some other options. Um, so ultimately, the only option is for his own private grinder pump, or if we can get buy-in, buy those in the area to try to help split those costs, but a million dollars on a few properties is going to.
But the original tent was just water?
The original tent is he wanted everything water soon electric, so.
He wanted all three?
Um, because he's in city limits, they're limited with, um, sewers, is my understanding, so. They don't like putting septic systems within city limits. He wouldn't think a hole in a ground would cost that much.
I don't know unless there's a way to put a, um, a septic in, and then just as a conditional use permit that they would hook on to sewer when it came available, or I don't know if that would be an option or not.
Haven't found the answers by yet.
I don't know either, I think that would have to go, we'd have to call the state to find that out.
Could, just curiosity, can you, can they put one of those, um, like, tanks in and then they just have it pumped?
That's kind of what the grinder pump is.
You're talking about? I don't have the terminology for it, one of them things.
The watch machine.
Yeah. They make a tank in the ground.
So are those six lots, like, residential lots, or whatever that?
They're agricultural right now. At one time, they did come to the city and asked us about building on theirs and hooking up to city water and sewer, and we kind of gave them the same answer on the sewer, um, and it was contingent on, we said, if you split it, you would have to annex in, otherwise we were gonna make, we'd let you do the one, but that didn't come to fruition, so.
Right now, it's about how many properties that you need to buy in?
Well, there's one, two, there's five to six that are pretend, that are there existing, and then there's one that's potentially bought and gonna build in there, which I reached out to them when we first heard about this about six months ago, and Steve had looked at it a little bit, and they said, yes, they'd be possibly interested, but I don't know that six people are gonna be, wanna split a million dollars. Without a development going in there or more, it's gonna be tough to.
Offset that, yeah.
Cause it would benefit the, um, I think we looked at it, there would be enough for the golf course to tie in if they wanted to as well, but. Cause we could make it deep enough to get all those things in.
Yeah, this would be a regional lift station if we put one in, and we'd be able to handle everything up at the north end there.
Unless we can work something out with regional water to, to make it work, but, cause they're starting to get into that too now. Maybe there would be more USDA funds, but I haven't seen anything.
Okay, so I just, I bring that up to you, that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I think we already, already went over DGR, so does anybody else have any?
Good job, Paul.
That was all in the back of my head at that time.
Does anybody have anything for, from the audience tonight for the commission? Nothing? Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we are adjourned.